Welcome to our March 19, 2013 School Board Meeting of Independent School District 709. Member Murdick, could you please lead us in roll call?
Member Cameron.
Here.
Member Johnston. Member Casper.
Here.
I'm here. Member Sligapunko.
Here.
Member Watson. Absent. Member Westholm.
Here.
Superintendent Grandseth.
Here.
Deputy Kirk Bill Hanson.
Here.
Secretary Theobald.
Here.
Our student representatives, Katie Parrish and Eric Theobald.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Member Murdick. We are going to have our students come forward and lead us in Pledge of Allegiance, and then we will have Mrs. Akervik come before us and talk for a few minutes about the program, and then also the kids are going to sing a couple more songs for us before we get to the main part of our board meeting. So if the kids would like to come forward and do that, please.
Start us off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hold on a second, Mrs. Akervik. Let me light you up there.
There we go.
There we go.
Thank you, Chair Casper, members of the board, Superintendent Grandseth, and directors and guests here tonight. I want to introduce again, this is the Chamber Group, Little Mob, directed by Marcia Van Camp. They meet during which hour of the day?
Zero hour.
Zero hour. So they are here because we still have our zero hour class, and we're very appreciative of that. I think everybody's here tonight, and they're going to do one more song, and then we'll have Solid Gold come back up again, and they meet daily, right? Daily. They've been pretty busy lately. March is Music in Our Schools Month, and I'll talk about that in a couple minutes. Thank you for allowing them to come and share their music tonight.
All right, thank you, Solid Gold and Little Mob. We kind of know exactly our field. Mission Impossible sometimes up here, but we do the best that we can. Moving on to the approval of the agenda. Motion by Member Sligapunko, a second.
Second.
By Member Westholm, any discussion? Member Johnston.
Yes, I'd like to move to amend the agenda. I move to amend the agenda to have the school board convene an independent audit committee to investigate approximately $14 million and change orders since the start of the RED Plan. Who approved them, when they occurred, when they were approved by the school board, and their engineering validity. This includes East High School, 3.3 million, Denfeld High School, 2.6, Lincoln Parks, 0.6, East Ordine, 2.1. The Audit Committee will investigate its impact on the budget, the large class sizes, and reduced curriculum.
Is there a second regarding the amendment? Is there a second regarding the amendment to the agenda? Seeing none, we are back to the agenda before us. Seeing no further lights, could I get a motion or a, could we get a vote to approve the agenda before us? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? carries six and nothing. Moving on to reading and approval of minutes. Could I get a motion to accept the special school board meeting minutes of Tuesday, February 26, 2013? Motion by Member Sligapunko, a second. By Member Westholm, any discussion regarding the special school board meeting of February 26? Seeing none, all those in favor approving those minutes? Signified by aye. Any opposed? Moving on to the regular school board meeting minutes of Tuesday, February 26, 2013. Could I get a motion to accept? Made by Sligapunk, Member Sligapunko, a second. By Member Westholm, any discussion regarding the minutes? Member Johnston.
Mr. Chair, a couple of things I'd like to suggest. Viewing the meeting from last time was numerous eye-rolling, lots of whispering in the background. I'd like to ask the chair to tell the rest of the board to stop doing that. Also have a couple of specific items. One on the approval of the minutes in the middle of the page. I made a point of order. Point of order must be in the minutes. It's not even mentioned. I also made four motions on that. None of those are in the minutes as well. Further down on the page, it says a discussion took place and was clarified that his motions were not seconded and therefore not recorded. There wasn't a clarification, there was an obfuscation. I'd like to read again to the board the minutes. Bylaws say, says motions by law 9110, the minutes of the regular school board, and special meetings of the school board shall and shall include, number nine, a record of each motion placed before the school board, including the member making the motion and the member seconding, if any. It's quite clear, I brought this up a month ago, and it appears that that should be put in there. To do it is a violation of our bylaws, plain and simple.
Thank you, Member Johnston. Your point is so noted. Member Sligapunko.
Thank you, Chair Casper. Just a reminder to board members and Member Johnston, we have talked about this since August, and a motion is not an official motion if there is no second. And it's clear. We've had this discussion, it's been communicated ad nauseam, so those are not official motions. So I think we need to move on and just vote on the minutes.
Thank you, Member Sligapunko. Member Cameron.
A clarification, I asked, Miss, Member Johnston, I believe he referenced something to a special school board meeting, and the minutes he's discussing is at our regular school board meeting. Could you clarify that for me?
Member Johnston.
Sure, I'll read bylaw 279110, the minutes of the regular and special.
Your plate is still on, are you still?
Yeah, I'd like to say one more thing. Again, it's quite clear that our bylaws have done this, and people that say that we've had this discussion in the past, either they, it's pretty clear what the minutes say, and it doesn't, in refusal of this board to even acknowledge that this is our bylaws, which is our governing body of laws is our bylaws, 9110. That either means that this board can't read, or it's hiding a financial irregularities, which are leading to cuts in the classroom, large class sizes, and reduced curriculum. And I would hope that the chairperson would reconsider that and read our bylaws.
All right, seeing no further lights, could I get a motion or a vote on the school board meeting of February 26, please? Member Johnston?
Other items of corrections that were needed.
Okay.
Back on page five, there are several errors on the items that were pulled out, minor things, but I can get those to you later if you would like.
Okay. If you could get those to me or Secretary Theobald for those changes.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
And I also had another motion to amend that also, and that, of course, was not on there as well. And again, I'd like to point out again to the chairperson that during this discussion last month, there was very easy to see on the camera, lots of eye-rolling, lots of whispering in the background, and I'd like the chairperson to say that's inappropriate.
All right, thank you for your comments, Member Johnston. Regular meeting, again, the minutes from the regular February meeting before us, all those in favor of approval of minutes? Any opposed? Carries five to one with Member Johnston voting no. Moving on to our March 11, 2011, or 2013 meeting, could I get a motion to accept the minutes? Motion made by Member Sligapunko, a second. By Member Westholm, any discussion? Seeing none, let's move to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those minutes pass. That brings us to the reading, or the reading, excuse me, the communications. We have none regarding that. Now we move on to the audience participation. Member Johnston, if you could please grab the list for us. I remind everybody who's speaking today to be civil. You will have three minutes to speak. Member Murdick will be keeping track for you. Approach the mic, be direct, and, and civil with us and other members of the community. As I mentioned, Member Murdick will be keeping track. He has a light before you, as it starts to flash and turns to red, we'll be needing you to wrap it up. If after a brief period of time you're not, I will instruct you to please finish up with your thoughts. So first on our folks to come to speak before us is Terry Akervik. Welcome, Terry. We're glad that you're here and glad that you had the kids here for us today.
Thank you, Chair Casper, members of the board, Superintendent Grandseth, directors and audience. My name is Terry Akervik. I'm the music curriculum specialist here for Duluth in the Curriculum and Learning Services Department, and I'm happy to be visiting with you again. This is March, and that is Music in Our Schools Month. It also celebrates Youth Art Month, so there's a lot, have been a lot of performances and activities around Duluth. I want to speak to a couple of the things that are going on. Music in Our Schools is actually sponsored by the National Association of Music Educators, so there's concert and performances not only in Duluth but across our state and nation. A lot of the national organizations for the music educators have been going on in March. We had, Mrs. Marcia Van Camp just came back from Texas. She's at the National Association of Choral Directors. I'm also a member of that group. And we had a student from one of the choirs that you just heard, Megan Rudd, and she was in the National Choir. That's quite a feat for her, so that's a national honor for her and also for Ms. Van Camp and Denfeld High School. That was great. Some of the other things, a lot of large contests have been going on, Superior and excellent ratings for our groups. We've had the opportunity to help, have them held at Duluth East due to that new or renovated facilities plan, and this is the first time, the last couple of years, that we've been able to do that for our region. That's a great honor for those teachers and then the groups to come to an area closer to where their schools are. High school and middle school students for all three content areas have been participating in honor band, choir, orchestra, days at UMD. Many students have also participated in festivals at Wayzetta, Superior, and the region. Multitude of performances of small groups that meet during zero hour throughout the community have been happening. We know that goes on throughout the year, but many, many, again, in March. Special concerts by elementary music classes and choirs for grandparents' Day, Veterans' Day, holiday programs, and a lot of spring events. All of the music teachers in the district participate in some sort of community band, choir, orchestra themselves. They're singing, they're playing, as well as conducting. They volunteer in community projects and put in countless hours of extra time in supporting the students and families for music education. Amazing learning and achievement of skills by the students are going on every single day in our classrooms, in and out of the classrooms. Thank you. Video was made by East Orchestra. We wanted to play that for you. We are having problems getting that. It's so big in the data. We cannot email it to you, but I am hoping to come to an ed committee or another meeting where you can see it. It was fabulous. The students composed a song and was thanking Trampled by Turtles. We received 75 guitars from the fundraiser, along with bell sets, and those guitars are being used at Unity and East right now, and that will go across to the middle school and the high school program. I'm working with the State of Music Department on, our State of the Union of Music Department for you, and with your permission, I'll be forwarding that to superintendent and to members of the board about all the good things I'm talking about and what's going on. Great things, again, that are going on all across our schools, and I invite you to come and visit the schools, attend the concerts. We have a link on our website, I can send that to you as well. I'm happy to say this is my eighth year. I have worked in curriculum and have come to speak for you, to you. It's a privilege. It's also my 24th year of teaching in Duluth, and that's a privilege as well. So thank you again for supporting us. I'll be sending you notes soon. Thanks again.
Thank you, Terry. And please pass on our thanks to the students who participated today, and also all of our teachers and staff that are supporting music in our schools. We recognize the importance of it and do the best that we can to support it, so thank you. Next speaker is Jane Rudd, and I'm guessing she might have a daughter that is in the program. Welcome, Jane. Let me turn you on there, there you go.
Terrific. My name's Jane Rudd. I am a family doc at West Duluth Essentia's Clinic. More importantly for this group, I'm the mother of four. I have a full quartet, two violins, a viola, and a cello, ranging from Lowell Elementary, I have one at Marshall Middle School, and two at Denfeld. I also have a Swedish exchange student this year who's at Denfeld High School as well. I appreciate you acknowledging Megan. Part of the reason I'm here is she's had so much success in the music program. She is first-year orchestra, she's leading in Little Mob, she's participated in honor orchestras, Allstate Choir, just returned from National Choir, which was a phenomenal experience, and God bless her, she wants to be a music teacher when she gets out of here. So we need to keep more of these kids coming on. I also wear the hat as president of the Music Boosters at Denfeld High School, and am very passionate about some of the changes that have occurred. I know for financial reasons, but I feel very, very drastic measures need to be taken to reverse some of the things that I think are going to happen if we don't do something. The first thing I want to talk about, I came here six years ago from small-town Montana. We plopped into Lowell, which was at that point a music magnet, and were thrilled with the first concert we attended. 300 voices, 75 strings, the Hallelujah Chorus, and I was in tears. This year, a couple of orf instruments, Ms. Hanka doing her best with the choir, and I was in tears. We have a closet full of wonderful Suzuki instruments. It's a graveyard. It's very sad to me. Let's move to the middle school. We've switched to a six-hour day. We're having to choose between music and foreign language. We've seen a drastic decline already in registration for ninth-grade freshman orchestra, from 50 down to 17. Maybe that's going to rebound slightly. You're going to kill the program. I don't have, in three minutes, I can't tell you. Invite me back, I'll spend three hours. The lack of instrumentation coming out of the middle schools will not support ongoing programs in band, music, or choir. It just can't happen. The numbers aren't going to be there. We will lose our advanced choirs, our jazz bands, our chamber orchestras. We'll have no students go to Allstate ever again. I guarantee it. I'm sorry, I'm very passionate about this. The last thing I'll just put on the table, there's a lot more, I hope people will fill in behind me, at the high school level, canceling zero hour. We've got a ninth grader, we know already, coming in. There are probably many more who is ready for jazz band. He's not going to be allowed to participate because he can't take a zero hour. Zero hour originally was designed for the music programs, for the elite students to have that opportunity for chamber music, for specialty music, for small group ensemble work, that they can't get in a large orchestra or choir or band setting. We've unfortunately had to feed into zero hour, advanced placement biology and honors courses, and those are the same kids. You see this across the board. Kids that are excelling in music are excelling in academics, and now they're having to choose. I know with the RED Plan, we were supposed to have equity between the high schools. We don't. The numbers aren't there at Denfeld to support several sections of CITs and honors classes, and so for that reason, there may be only one offered, and if a student wants to take orchestra or that class, that's the only class they can take, we lose them out of the orchestra or the choir. It isn't equal, and I, I hope you'll review that.
Jane, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up.
I appreciate it. Music Boosters is doing their best to support these teachers. We're funding as much as we can. It's falling on our shoulders to do the lion's share of helping for these teachers. I beg you to help them more. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. All right. Next up is Zane Kaiser. First of all, nice job, Zane. And then Leslie Churchill is up after Zane, so.
All right, good evening, school board. Thank you for having me. My name is Zane Kaiser. I'm a senior from Denfeld High School. I attended Central for two years and then transferred down to Denfeld, even from the East District, to follow my teachers and friends. I'm here to talk about not only zero hour, but also music students in general. I would like to talk that as a, I guess I would say, higher student, I have a high GPA, I'm on honorable, and I'm very involved in my school, that the option of taking zero hour as a freshman was not only essential to my education, but also wonderful to have. I have been thinking ahead of my education for four years, and now as a senior, I take three music classes at Denfeld and then PSCO at UMD to achieve higher education for free. I will also be attending the University of Minnesota next year for music education. That's the reason I'm here to speak to you. I think that there's a thought that children aren't able to think ahead of their schedules, as in four years, from a freshman to a senior, and that is not the case. Your high-achieving students, who are also involved in music, can see very early on that if they want to participate in, for example, jazz band, Solid Gold, Little Mob, among other among other things, along with taking very high and challenging classes, they have to take that extra class in the morning, and it needs to be offered. Now, I know, understand that there's less money and whatnot, and that comes from not only funding from property taxes instead of a general state fund, but enough is enough. We're having issues, and we're not able to sustain our program. In just four years, I've seen the legacy of Central High School's band program, especially the jazz band, which used to take first place at the Eau Claire Jazz Festival, now not able to compete at all in that program. And that's just in four years. I think it's essential to us, and I think it's necessary. As a student, I'm not very passionate about math or science. I've taken all the required courses, and I've enjoyed them, but music is my passion. It is many other students' passions as well, and without music, the numbers are going to go down more. Students are transferring, and it's going to keep happening. I don't really know what else we can do, and I don't know where else to cut, but it just matters to me so much. Also, as an openly gay student and as, just in general, not having a lot of support from certain teachers and staff when I was in middle school and elementary school, I found that the music program was the only thing that honestly kept me alive in high school. We can't just have a music program. We need a program that excels and advances our students to be prepared for the rest of the world. Thank you.
Next up, Leslie Churchill. Welcome, Leslie, and then Megan Rudd after that. You have to lower that a little, won't you?
Yeah. All right. Well, I'm Leslie Churchill. I'm a music teacher here in Duluth, and I'm also a parent, a Duluth Public School student. I'm not here asking for money. I understand the financial dilemma of the district as an, I support public education. But how have we gotten to this place where music is an extra in our curriculum? Why aren't students choosing music past the seventh grade? The sixth-period day has forced students to choose only one elective. Middle school is a time for exploration and self-expression. A middle school music program is a time to build on the basics of the skills they learned in elementary school and foster new growth. We've been successful in this area before in Duluth. There have been many cuts to music, only allowing for a music experience. Now, music teachers are left to do this experience alone. We are losing ground by not being able to meet with our students daily or to provide small-group lessons in their critical time of growth. Classes like biology, chemistry, and physics are not taught together in the same class period, so why would it be acceptable to happen in music class, teaching thirteen different instruments at a time? We owe it to our students to give them the proper foundation through lessons and staff support. It is not a luxury. They are critical to our growth and development in music and in other aspects of their lives. Music is about teaching skills. Students learn to work cooperatively in a group. You know, I don't even talk at concerts. Solve problems through hands-on learning experiences. As a music teacher, I am a part of laying the foundation for the 21st-century education, and that must be more than just math and reading testing. This is not a job I take lightly, nor should we as a community. We are investing in our future, and we must do it the right way. We need to remember where our priorities are. They should be with our students and providing them a well-rounded, 21st-century liberal arts education. If they don't get it here with us, some of them will get it elsewhere. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Leslie. Megan Rudd, followed by Andrew Martin. Welcome, Megan. Nice job earlier.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank you for having me and my friends and family here today. It's an honor to perform and sing in front of you. I have so much to say, so I guess I'll just start at the beginning. When I was in first grade, I was diagnosed with dyslexia and ADD, and it's something that's plagued me my entire life. I haven't been able to excel the way that my peers have in the classroom, in the math and, you know, science regions, and even in English. I wasn't able to read until fourth grade because of it. And at that time in my life, I had very low self-esteem because of the way that I was treated by teachers and my classmates. I didn't really think that I was the same as the other students in my grade because I couldn't do the same things that they could. You know, certainly not better than them. I really found myself in the choir room. I was given a solo, my, I think it was in second grade, I was given a solo, and for the first time, my students clapped, my classmates clapped for me, and they liked me, and they liked, they thought that I was really, you know, worthwhile. And since then, I've really found who I am as a person and, you know, as a student. Music is my whole life, music and art, and I'm not the only one. There are so many passionate students and teachers and parents in this city. We are blessed with the amount of talent that we have, and it's just, breaks my heart to see the way that it's declined in my four years alone. Just like Zane said, I, I've seen, you know, I'm involved in the orchestra program as well, and I've seen just a rapid decline in the amount of students registering for orchestra and the level of competency they have, because they don't have the opportunity to take lessons the way that we did four years ago. I implore you to look into your hearts and see the way that music has affected you in your life. I know that each and every one of you at some point has felt the power of music, maybe even today, and I beg you not to take that away from your children and me and my friends and my younger brother and sisters. If music doesn't continue in this district, then it won't be the happy place that it was when I first entered, and I would hate to see that happen. I'm going into a career in music education, and I look forward, and I'm scared that maybe I won't have a job, and maybe I'll end up working at McDonald's. I don't know. But I'm going to do it anyway, because music is everything to me. There's nothing else. So, please don't take that away. Thank you.
All right. Next up is Andrew Martin, followed by Carl Soderberg. Welcome, Andrew.
Good evening. Sorry. Okay. Yeah, I don't think I could speak any better than the last few speakers that have been before me, but I'll give it my best. As a senior at Denfeld High School, I, I've only been in one music until last year. I've only been in my school's band, actually, and then it wasn't until late last year, I was told that I should audition for this choir, because I have a decent voice, and it's, honestly, it's been the most life-changing thing in my life so far. I don't know where I would be today without meeting all of these great people and becoming a part of what is my second family. I'm sorry, Megan's speech was just... All right, and it was, if you just can think and just find a way to keep this opportunity open for others, I know more will enter like I did, because I was a complete late bloomer, and there will be more of me, I can guarantee it. And some people don't really find who they are until their senior year. I was kind of wandering my high school experience, not really knowing what I could be with this band credit. I thought, hey, I'll be able to get into college, and this is all I needed, but no, there's way, way more than that. Music is an expression of self, and through this choir, it has been the most I can express ever. It was, it's just the greatest experience, and I don't think I would trade it for the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Next up is, next up is Carl Soderberg, followed by Chris Stolen. Welcome, Carl. And did I pronounce your last name correctly?
Soderberg.
Soderberg, all right. Welcome.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, board. Thank you, Superintendent Grandseth, and directors, and general audience. My name is Carl Soderberg. I have two daughters who attend Duluth Public Schools. My eldest daughter is a junior at Denfeld High School, and I have seen her blossom, not in just her time at Denfeld, but over the last eleven and a half years. She has developed the ability to analyze and solve problems. She has learned self-discipline and self-motivation. She can communicate effectively and work with her peers in a cooperative nature. All of these skills are vital for success in the 21st century, and students who participate in music education are asked to practice these skills on a regular basis. I've had the honor to say that I've been a teacher in the Duluth Public Schools for the past thirteen years, and each year is more difficult than the last, and our budget troubles will certainly be compounded by the sequestration at the federal level. Yet, the Duluth Public Schools will continue to improve student learning and, at the same time, continue to give students the best educational opportunities available. If we have a committed focus on developing creativity, imagination, and personal expression, this will only help our students meet the rigorous academic standards that are being set for them. And I would just like to, you know, just say that the students who participate in music programs are, they're exposed to different cultures. I find that they tend to be more cooperative with peers and the adults in their lives, and they're more self-confident, and they're better able to express their ideas. I know that the music programs are everything and mean everything to my daughter and, and her peers, and I urge you to think about the arts when determining budgets and making program decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Next up is Chris Stolen. Nice job earlier today as well, Chris, followed by Lauren Warren.
As a member, Casper said, my name is Christopher Stolen. I am a senior at Duluth Denfeld High School, and I would just like to say, I've been a member of the music program for the past four years of my high school career, and I was in music as a middle school, in middle school at Morgan Park, and I would like to say that music is one of the most, if not the most important things that has happened to me in my life. And being in Solid Gold and stepping up, which is now no longer a course at Denfeld, it was a Zero Hour choir, which has been cut, I would just like to say that I have learned more than just music skills in this class. I have learned leadership skills. For example, I was the captain of the football team this year, and I will soon be commander of our squadron in the Duluth Civil Air Patrol, which is auxiliary to the Air Force, and Solid Gold has taught me more leadership skills than both the Civil Air Patrol and football combined. And for it to be cut, including Little Mob, would just be absolutely devastating to our school, and, hold on one second. I would just like, I have...
That's all right. Take your time.
Music is more important to me than anything in my life, and I just don't want to take it away. And I will be, I will be in music in college, and I just don't want to see music being cut for my school students and them not being able to have the opportunities that we get to have. That's all. I'd like to thank you for your time.
Next up is Laura Warren, followed by Henry Helgen. Welcome, Laura.
What?
Laura?
Yes.
Okay, welcome.
Hi. I'm, would like to start by recognizing that we realize that the board is doing the best they can with money allocated from the state funds. Since the eighties, we've seen a big decline in what the state is willing to put to the schools as if it's the bottom priority. You know, I've been in the military since the eighties, so we live everywhere, and, boy, you really see it in California. They started the whole lottery out there to put to the schools, and none of it goes to the schools. I don't think any of it does. And they don't have the programs that they've had here. And when my daughter was talking about they're going to get rid of the art program next year, and now music might go as well, because the students have to take language. They have priorities that they have to do to make the colleges happy, and so, that's got to be your priority. But music and art isn't just something extra fun to do with the kids. Music is part of our soul, I think. It speaks to us, it helps us through hard times, it's just natural. It's something in our DNA that we thrive for music, and when we have hard times and both parents working and everybody's still struggling to get by, and the kids don't have the mom at home teaching them how to knit and, you know, make everything and do all the chores and the family like it used to be, because everybody has to go to work now, what do they have to replace that? And how much better is Duluth doing than so many other places I've been? A lot better, because they really have kept up their school. And I watch History Duluth, and I think, when we're getting rid of all of this, what is it going to look like when we watch that show in twenty years? And what's Duluth going to look like? You know, these things enlighten our children's minds. They make them more creative, intellectual, and adaptive adults. They're the caretakers of our humanity's future, and if we make them the bottom priority, that's what we're going to get in the future. All these things are very important. The schools are very important. They're replacing the home life, the family that we used to have. These kids feel so strongly about their groups because that's their second family. It's keeping them from doing things that are negative, because I have, I have choir practice, I have band, we've got a show, we're going to the finals, my daughter does the swim, my son was the theater and the a cappella choir and the academic league. You know, all these things keep them busy and keep their minds engaged and keep them bright and mature and responsible, all the things that mom and dad don't have time to teach anymore. We do, we do our best, but, you know, we're gone and we're tired, and the school has become so much more important nowadays than it, than it was before, and yet, now when it's really stepping up and becoming more important, we're backing off and getting rid of everything.
Laura, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up, please.
I was just going to wrap up, and now you made me forget what I was going to say.
I'm sorry.
Nope, I can't get it back.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just, I just hope that you'll consider the future of, you know, a lot more than just these classes, when we're thinking about what we're getting rid of, what we're losing, and what we're doing to our youth, where they're going to go without these things.
You did a nice job wrapping up.
Thank you.
Next up is Henry Helgen, followed by Sandy Bacon. Welcome, Henry.
Hi, I'm Henry Helgen. Thanks for the, thanks, school board and chairman and superintendent. So, I'm a parent of two kids, a sixth grader and a ninth grader. They're both in orchestra, and they've had to make some decisions this year. My ninth grader, she didn't have a Zero Hour this year. She doesn't have a Zero Hour for registering for tenth grade next year, so she has to decide whether it's going to be the required course of health or language or music, and so she's pushing health off to the year afterwards, and that's going to compound the whole schedule thing, and is pushing back on college planning for all these, college in the schools. My sixth grader has the, has the fortune of being in orchestra, but that's maybe short-lived, because when she gets to eighth grade, there's no two electives, there's only a choice between music and language course. So, there's lots of, there's lots... music and language course. So, there's lots of, there's lots of people in that same situation. They have to make these choices. I would say let's make a priority of, uh, electives for our advanced students, for music and for language, and let's do it all. Um, music education is, it's not just an extra. Music education means creativity. It means highly-skilled, intuitive, problem-solving employees, managers, and entrepreneurs. Without that kind of creativity, it's just people show up at a job and they write their checks, and that's not much of a life. I mean, creativity, we can be leaders and in innovators if we can instill this creativity in our kids. School without music would be like playing a team sport, but it's all practice and no games. It'd be sprints and leg lifts every day, but no playing other teams. Okay? Um, the East High School had this combined holiday concert. That was amazing. There must have been four hundred musicians on that stage. I, I don't think that's something that could be repeated by the Duluth Superior Symphony. And that doesn't happen instantly. That takes, that takes work, starting in the middle schools. So, we've got to have the music in the middle schools so that you can have it, a really successful program in the high schools. It says a lot about a community, what we support, what we support and what we prioritize. So, I would urge you, let's prioritize music in our schools, and let's prioritize these electives and, uh, advanced courses in our schools for the education. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. Next up is Sandy Bacon, followed by Sue Van Oss. Welcome, Sandy.
Thanks. Hi, I'm here tonight because I cannot make the Monday meeting that is for Cogdon Elementary School to be able to have their voices heard. I'm going to be out of town, and I wanted to have my voice heard. Um, I'm fully aware that there's a limited amount of money left in our project, and that there are more projects than money, and so inevitably, there's a debate of where that money should go. Um, what I don't understand is the latest information about the options that have been put on the table, and that some of these things are being put out into what to me seems like an apples-to-apples comparison, when they are not, they shouldn't be compared in that way. Um, when I saw some of those spending options, you know, there's this pool of money. We could do things like put in the limited-use elevator, fix, uh, the stairs, put the sidewalks in that the kids need to walk to school, or we can get a retaining wall, um, put in blacktop space, get the climbing structure. Um, honestly, I was completely shocked that these things are on the plate together to pick and choose from. Um, I don't really understand how the safety issues and the handicap-accessible issues are choices that the school board can make. I don't, I don't see how those can be put on the same place. Those are necessities, not choices. Um, I really don't think they should be in the, like, if we have money left over category for our school. Um, I, I was talking to a friend earlier today and told her, I kind of feel like I'm in this weird Saturday Night Live skit where I have to go talk to the school board and say, like, please don't put children's safety and, you know, handicap-accessibility in the same category as a hockey rink. But here we are in Minnesota, and I really do feel like I have to come to the school board and say, please, do not choose recreational space over safety and handicap-accessibility issues. Um, I love recreational space. I hope that there is money left over to do it. It's a good thing, but it's not the best thing to do with that money. Um, I really just would urge you to take care of the safety issues, to take care of the handicap-accessible issues, and then with any money that's left, let the debate begin. Let's duke it out over the wall or the blacktop or the climbing structures or whatever is left. Um, but to me, this isn't about trying to please certain members of the community or trying to appeal to certain groups that have a lot of pull. It's about doing what's right for the school, and, um, you know, as a school board member, it stated that your role and responsibility is to be in the best interest of all students and citizens, and it seems to me that, um, safety and accessibility is certainly, should be number one in that responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Next up is Sue Van Oss, uh, followed by Kim Wood. Welcome, Sue.
Thanks. First off, I just have to say to these young men and women who sang and have spoke, that I hope my elementary daughter grows up to be as fine a young person as you are. She loves music, and you are her heroes. So, thank you for coming. I'm, uh, first co-president of the Cogdon Park PTA, but I'm not speaking as a representative of PTA. I'm speaking as a parent and a former member of the design team, and many in our school community are concerned with several issues of accessibility, safety, and inequity that are now in the words of a recent newspaper article, having to compete for remaining outdoor space funds. When you look at equal accessibility to a new high school gym, when you, that is in the plans right now, uh, someone in a wheelchair would have to go out of that secured area to access that gym. When you look at equal access to the playground, someone who is handicapped would have to, cannot get directly from the playground into the school. They would have to go all the way around, the outside and, and all the way around. When you look at equal access to blacktopping space that was demolished and is now reduced by half, making the, um, space one of the smallest spaces, playground spaces, for one of the largest elementary schools. When you look at equal access to playground equipment that other elementary schools had as a part of their budget. When you look at equal access to entering the buildings by means other than the crumbling steps off Superior Street that are on a steep incline with no railings, in which several children and adults have fallen in the past years. And when you look at access to the largest field space, um, we just are wondering why Cogdon is the only school that is now in this situation. Did other schools have to compete for handicap access, for railings, for blacktop? And we would really ask the school board members to take this next week before the committee of the whole, to really look at the plans. We know you're very busy, but we really encourage you to look at the plans, and we look to you to advocate for every child and every adult that walks through those doors of our school. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Next up is Kim Wood, followed by Tom Ruther. Welcome, Kim.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Casper and school board members. I also would like to echo Sue in thanking the leaders in the high school that have come here to speak with us tonight. One of my boys is a Suzuki violin student in second grade, and I hope he can experience what these students are speaking to. First, I thank you for your time and your consideration tonight. I'm speaking to my concerns regarding the federal laws involving five oh, five oh four legislation and ADA requirements. My husband and I have a second-grade twin boys at Cogdon Park Elementary. I'm very nervous. I'm sorry. One of our sons was born with cerebral palsy, cerebopalsy, and attends school in a wheelchair. I'm standing in front of you first and foremost as a mother. I am also here tonight as a concerned community member. Today, according to the design, the only way our son and the staff who attend to his needs can enter the gymnasium is by leaving the secured envelope of the school and enter the gym through the public vestibule. I strongly encourage you to put the limited-use elevator back into the design as originally drawn. Currently, people with mobility issues who do not use a car when approaching from Gray Salon Place must enter the parking lot, move against traffic, and enter the school through a cutout in the curb. Please consider members of our school and our community who may have a broken leg, living with MS, or use a motorized wheelchair. How can we allow them to be a part of our community? I encourage you, as a school board, to replace the designated stairs coming off Gray Salon Place with an accessible ramp for bicycles, strollers, pedestrians, and those with mobility to enter, mobility issues to enter our schools safely. To date, there are no sidewalks connecting the northwest side of the school with the southwest side of the school. Individuals with mobility issues wanting to enter the school from the northwest would either have to walk eastbound along Superior Street, down Cogdon Park Drive, and back toward the school to enter the main entrance, or walk down the street of Thirty-First Avenue. We can, can we not consider making the school accessible by placing a sidewalk along Thirty-First Avenue? The sidewalk originally in the design would also allow student, staff, and community access to the outside classroom and the future school gardens. There are many scenarios, options, and choices that will be thought of, considered, and decided upon in the next couple of weeks. I ask you to stand behind your elected roles. You have been elected by the public to affect the future of students, community, and society. I respect, I respectfully state that your decision must reflect in the best interest of all students and all citizens today and fifty years plus from today. Thank you.
Next up is Tom Ruther, followed by Mary Lars, Larson. Welcome, Tom.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. I'm here to speak about the Rockridge Park and the property of the former Rockridge School. After forty-eight years of acquisition and operating costs for a neighborhood school funded by the taxpayers of the district, a park and recreation grounds have become part of our community, our history. I'm here to go on the record that the neighbors opposed the school's present land use change and rezoning to apartments at the Rockridge site. We have no other choice. As presented, this change will be a loss for the general community and the neighbors. The potential loss of a now-established park with green space now part of the history of this neighborhood is strongly felt. There are future magnified burdens cost to be borne by neighbors with the apartment development plans which will follow, seeking approval. This means ongoing meetings responding to this, reminding us of how we came to be caught up in a seeming never-ending conflict. There is the impact on inadequate sewers, the impact of stormwater runoff, and the fear of reduced property values. A decision to develop the Rockridge property for apartments becomes an agonizing reality for the neighbors. Your present proposal asks too much of us. Yet, opposition alone is not an answer to our differences. The school board along with city council have the power and authority to conclude this. We neighbors are relegated to putting forth our collective voices in hopes we will be heard. You are urged to have the proposed land use change placed on hold. Revisit our alternatives to the site, considering the tangible fiscal burdens, while also incorporating the recreational and spiritual intangible facets of the present use as park and green space, important community resources in and of themselves, and of course, not inserting apartments into the site, which is in conflict with the present established neighborhood fabric. So, we are present this evening. We need to prepare for next week's planning commission agenda to change the land use. Petitions are being prepared to better reflect our position as we go forward, to be better heard, hoping to be included in the process and decisions. It would be hoped we can all come together and work toward a mutually acceptable resolution. Until such an opportunity surfaces, we are obliged to oppose this vigorously. Yet, hope is a thread going forward in that mutual middle way which can perhaps be found that addresses both sides' concerns and needs. In reaching towards and concluding a mutually acceptable resolution generates another intangible, that of goodwill for efforts made and accomplished, an important building block in all relationships. In the final analysis, we neighbors cannot resolve this. We do not have the power. The authority resides with you, the board. Yet, I would suggest, for both the short and long term, you cannot satisfactorily resolve this entirely on your own. How do we find a way to go forward together? Robert Filgum, author of All I Really Need to Know I Learned in Kindergarten, tells us, when we go out into the world, we need to watch out for traffic. Hold hands, stick together. And equally important, he says, be aware of wonder. A park and green space includes a sense of wonder. So, let us find a way, hold hands, seek the things we have in common, seeking, seeking the better direction for us all. Yes, I know, it's a hard thing. I don't think we have any other realistic option. A familiar quote...
Tom, I'm going to have you wrap up for us, please.
Wrapping up, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
A familiar quote, "They don't care what you know until they know that you care." Please know, we do care. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Next up is Mary Larson, followed by, it looks like Brian Medred. Hopefully, I've pronounced that properly. Welcome, Mary.
Hello, school board. I'm Mary Larson. I have lived in the Lakeside District for forty years, thirty-three, right below Hawks Ridge and the school. It has been the best neighbor that we could have ever had. I, our children enjoyed going to the school. Our children enjoyed playing ball games up at the school. It's precious, precious property, and I want my neighbor to be safely secured in the best role that it can have. I've heard lots of rumors that have gone around the town about what this could be. Some of them were actually silly, but that land has got to be used in the best way that it possibly can. Lakesiders are lakesiders. People stay in the lakeside area once they've gotten there. They love it, and that means that we will take care of the area of Rockridge School. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Next up, Brian Medred, followed by Barb Soder. Welcome, Brian.
You're welcome, Tom. Uh, congratulations. You're one of the few that actually got my last name correct. So, you did a very good job on that. Uh, I'm here to talk about Rockridge. I'm sure that fifty years ago, your patriots didn't sit here and discuss the future benefits of the cost analysis of this school. And I'm sure you're not thinking right now of the schools you're building, of what you're going to do with them a hundred years from now. But a neighborhood has come to reply, rely on that school as a green space. It's come on, rely on that school to access to Hawks Ridge, because you not only control that area, you control access to probably fifty to sixty acres or more up on Hawk Ridge. And if you sell it all off, you block access to all that. There's a soccer field there. The kids kick the ball around, play soccer on. There's a large green space. I often, I snowshoed it up today. Took the two dogs, snowshoed up to Hawk Ridge, took in the view. All those areas are things that people have relied on for fifty years. A portion of the property was actually taken up on property tax forfeit, and nothing was ever built on that piece of property. Well, I take that back. I guess there was an ice skating warming house erected at one time. Uh, don't know the history of it, don't know how long it stayed there. It does, it was on a pillar or cement hill, so I guess it would qualify as a permanent structure, uh, although it wasn't. I, I, as a neighbor, living downhill and knowing this summer that basements were washed out from the flood, uh, from that hillside, really don't want to see the entire thing developed. One more impervial surface is just more runoff for the people living downhill. So, I'm asking you to keep some of the green space. I'd like to see a, the park, whatever you want to call that. I think maybe the soccer field and some up, access uphill to Hawk Ridge as an opening area for the public to use. I understand you need money. I understand that it's tight. I don't know if that building really fits that area. I would say no. There, I sat with the zoning board the other day, and as they described it as a remote area and then described it as an urban setting, I'm having a hard time reconciling. and then described it as an urban setting, I'm having a hard time reconciling. So I ask you to think of all of this, and I see the lights on, so I'm gonna say, please keep in mind that the neighborhood has used this park for fifty, well, roughly fifty years and would like to use some of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Next up is Barb Soder. And Member Johnson, if you could please check to see if we have any additional names. Please, welcome, Barb.
Good evening, school board and everyone else. I've been a native Duluthian here for fifty-five years. The only daughter that never left Duluth, and I've come full circle. I now live a block and a half away where my childhood home was. The reason why I'm here tonight is pretty simple. I live at 5025 Glendale. I went to Rock Ridge. Yeah, I remember that quite well. Anyway, don't want to bore you with that. I'm here to say, please save the neighborhood tranquility by allowing us Rock Ridge residents to sit in on the developers' and school board meeting so we residents can let the developer know our green goal of preserving our small segment of land that is so very important to all of us in continuing to keep the Rock Ridge area family and pet-friendly that we have established and kept growing strong throughout the past decades. I thank you for your time and consideration, and this is my first school board meeting, so thank you so much.
Barb, you did well. Thank you. That concludes our segment of our meeting. For the public to speak, we will now move on to our report of the superintendent. Again, thanks, everybody who came before us, and again, thank you to Solid Gold and the Little Mob. Great to have you guys here. Superintendent Grantseth.
I too want to thank Solid Gold and Little Mob. It's good to see some familiar faces back there. Welcome and thanks for being here. I too was a Solid Gold singer back in the day, so. I was also a Shades of Gold member, but that's Morgan Park and that's before your time. So with that, I did want to thank our speakers for coming tonight. You know, there were many references to state and local funding, and certainly that has been a challenge in Duluth for a number of years as we try to address our financial deficits year after year because of that lack of funding. And hopefully, with the governor's budget and hopefully some changes in our local funding soon, we will be able to fully support the curriculum that we in Duluth have been so proud of. Until then, we are going to continue to have difficult decisions to face. So do know that I fully support the arts and science and music and math and social studies, and we will make the decisions as best we can, given the resources that we have to do so. With that, I did want to address a couple of the other issues that were brought up this evening. I believe I'm speaking for the board. You can throw something if I'm not, that says that we will be supporting putting the limited-use lift in Cogdon, and we have requested that the architect make some changes to the site designs to better support the accessibility of the site, as well as considering some of the other items under discussion. There is also reference to 10th graders not having access to zero-hour options, and the board has not made any decision or action that would stop 10th graders from signing up for a zero hour at this time. It's certainly an item that's on the list for consideration but has not been acted on or recommended at this point. I also wanted to point it out that music and language are not the only electives available at the middle school for the eighth graders to choose from. There are also some vocational and CTE courses that are available, and noting that language, often for a college requirement, most public colleges require two years, some requiring three. We currently offer five years of language, so the references made to having to choose language over music or having to make choices over music don't necessarily relate to college entrance. But I understand it's a difficult choice to make. With that, we have had a very busy month here in Duluth, and we have a lot to celebrate. And to start with, I'm pleased to have a special presentation from representatives from St. Louis and Carlton County, Pheasants Forever, and Chapter President Phil Storstein and Youth Director David Lood are here about a project called Habitat for Homecroft, and they have a presentation to make to Chair Casper and myself. So Mr. Lood and Mr. Storstein, if you would come on up to the front, we will meet you in front of the desk here. I thought we talked about it down there, but I realized we didn't have a mic down there, so I'll finish telling you what we just did. They were here to support a project that focuses on establishing an outdoor classroom adjacent to the Homecroft Elementary School property, where school and community youth will receive hands-on learning about wildlife ecology, conservation, and biology within a natural environment. And what they did is they presented a check to be applied to the purchase of land for Habitat for Homecroft, and that check was in the amount of eighteen thousand, six hundred seventy dollars and forty cents. Thank you very much for that generous gift of partnership as we move forward in developing that land. Also, we are really proud of the Denfeld and East robotics teams. Both teams had an impressive showing in the competition that was held here in Duluth. And through a partnership with the Duluth News Tribune, East team produced a special insert about the regional robotics competition. Hopefully, you got a chance to look over that. They did a great job, and we wish both teams well as they continue in their competitions. Also, pardon? There are, and we're going to be recognizing them a little bit. Our high school hockey teams also have a lot to be proud of. Denfeld had a fantastic season. I so wish they had made it. I was there. East also had a great season, made it to third place at the state tournament, and I did make it down to the state tournament. And I have to tell you that the players and the staff weren't the only ones that I was so proud of. The Excel Center staff actually came to find me to tell me that our students had come and asked for garbage bags before the game, and they went through and cleaned up in the Excel Center before their game, and I was so proud of them for that. Also, the hotel staff also contacted me after the tournament was over to share how courteous and polite our students were throughout the tournament. So I'm just, I'm so proud of how our students represented us at the tournament overall, both players, staff, and students, as well as our coaches, Kevin Smalley and Mike Randolph, who were both named honorees with the John Mariucci Award for being Coaches of the Year in both Class A, Single A, and Double A. That's right. And Denfeld's Brian Lent was also named Class A Assistant Coach of the Year, so we just had a lot to celebrate there. We also had a visit from the Minnesota Education Commissioner, Brenda Cassilius, who is here to discuss special education and special education funding and to talk about the governor's proposal to reduce the impact of cross subsidies between general education and special education. And the Think Kids Initiative had over two thousand people who participated in the meetings, which I'm very proud of, and those results are now being used to help create a common educational vision for ISD 709, and a draft document will be available online next Monday, the 25th, for the public and groups who are involved along the way to give our feedback to give their feedback to us on that draft. We'll then be creating a final draft, and it will be presented to you at next month's Education Committee, where we'll be asking for your support in the community's new vision and priorities for the Duluth schools. Now, finally, last but not least, as we've been doing for the last couple of meetings and will continue to do, I invite the board to the floor as Assistant Superintendent Crawford tells us about the school board's honorees for this month, Cassie Marburg and Kirsi Kudi.
Members of the board, I'm pleased to present for recognition two outstanding young women from our high schools. Cassie Marburg, Denfeld High School. Cassie was selected for the 2013 Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year Award. She will go on to compete with other youth on the state and national level. The Youth of the Year recognition program promotes service to the club, community and family, academic success, strong moral character, life goals, and poised and public speaking Also, here this evening is Kirsi Kudi, captain of the Duluth East Dare Devos Robotics Team. Kirsi is a recipient of the Minnesota Aspirations for Women in Computing Award for high school students. The award presented by Advanced IT Minnesota. Winners were selected based on their interests, accomplishments, and community involvement in computing and technology, as well as for their aspirations in computing and technology-related fields.
All right, thank you, Superintendent Grantseth. It's nice to hear all these wonderful things that our students and our community is doing with us and with our schools to make our community a better place, so thank you, everybody involved in that vision. We are now going to move to our standing committees. Member Cameron, if you would please move with the Education Committee report.
This is the, oh, sorry. There you go. We getting that?
This is, I think so. Okay, there I am. The Education Committee report for Tuesday, March, from Tuesday, March 12. Informational items. Duluth Chargers lacrosse team independent provider agreement request. Pat O'Connell and Andy Holak of the Duluth Chargers lacrosse team were present to provide information on the team's request to enter into independent provider agreement with the Duluth Public Schools. It's recommended that the school board receive this information, this item as informational. There were no grant applications. Item number two is an action item. Presentation items required approval. It was the Career and Technical Education or CTE program approval. The following programs have completed the CTE program approval process and have been approved by the Minnesota Department of Education's Adult and Career Education Department through November 30, 2017, and there are a number of programs listed, media technology, graphic arts, early childhood guidance and education careers, construction, technology, technology and engineering, medical occupation, et cetera, et cetera. It is recommended that the school board accept and approve this item. Policy 1140 Tobacco-Free School District. We had policy 1140 presented to us by, she's gone, by a member of our school district, and this is recommended that the school board accept and approve policy 1140 Tobacco-Free School District for the first reading. Item C is extended trip requests, and there are a number of requests there for Cogdon Park Elementary, fourth graders who will be traveling to Wolf Ridge. Duluth Public Schools FCC LA Hero students will be traveling to the Crown Plaza Minneapolis, north of Minneapolis, Minnesota, to compete in the state competition and participate in leadership training. And 20 Duluth Public Schools 11th and 12th grade high school students will be traveling to the Best Western Kellyanne in St. Cloud, Minnesota, to participate in the Sprint Leadership and State Competition Conference. And then Duluth Public Schools Skills USA Minnesota students in grades nine through 12 will be traveling to the Double Tree Hotel in Bloomington, Minnesota, to participate in the state skills USA competition. And Denfeld's Automotive Skills Club will be traveling to the Hilton, Bloomington, and Minneapolis, Minnesota, to participate in the state conference. It's recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve this item. I'd like to move acceptance of the action items in this report.
Could I get a second? Second by Member Seliga Punko. Any discussion regarding the Education Committee meeting? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Excuse me, Member Westholm, the Human Resources Report, please.
Thank you. Following action items for this month's Human Resource Report, there are four certified co-curricular appointments, one certified member deceased, one certified extension, two certified leaves, five certified long-term subs, one certified resignation, two certified retirements, one certified temporary increase, four non-certified appointments, one non-certified demotion, one non-certified extension, seven non-certified leaves, two non-certified promotions, one non-certified termination, one non-certified temporary decrease, and three non-certified temporary increase. And those are the action items, and there are no other informational items, and there are no HR future items, and so I move the HR report for March.
Could I get a second? Second by Member Seliga Punko. Any discussion regarding the Human Resources Committee meeting report? Seeing none, let's move to a vote. All in favor? All right. Any opposed? That carries five, nothing. All right, Member Seliga Punko, the Business Committee Report, please.
Okay, thank you. This is the Business Committee Report for Tuesday, March 19, 2013. Number one is the financial report and all the usual reports that we have. Number two, bids, RFPs, and quotes, and we have quotes. Quote number 4140, 2013 lawn care services. I don't know how soon we're gonna need those, actually, with all the snow. But anyway, it's recommended that the school board approve the quotes submitted above to complete the work defined in quote 4140 for 2013 district-wide lawn care services. Total amount of sixty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-five cents, with options to extend the services depending on the growing season. And then turn the page, and we have policies and regulations, Policies by Law 9095, Order of Business for Regular Meetings, and it's recommended that the- And it's recommended that the Duluth School Board approve the second reading of bylaw 9095 Order of Business for Regular Meetings. And of course, that's for monthly recognition, which the superintendent has put in his place, but will be able to start just having its own special place. And then, we have number four, Contracts, Change Orders, and Leases. We have change orders for Congdon, Lincoln Park, and Ordine East, and some are pluses and some are minuses. And number five, Resolutions. We have a placeholder, which I think was not there, right? And then, the Resolution, B313-3079, Designation of Depository and Acceptance of Collateral.
Do you want to do that one now?
I think I'm going to move to that. Yeah, let's go to page 59. I'll just take care of that right now. Some housekeeping. Okay. I know I found it here. Where is that? Is it page 59? Let's see. Where is that? Let me read. Oh, I had it. I had it marked off, but I just missed it here. Okay. Resolution Designation of Depository and Acceptance of Collateral. And I'll just move Resolution B3-13-3079 dated March 19, 2013.
Could I get a second?
Second.
Second by Member Cameron. Any discussion regarding that resolution? Seeing none, let's move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries 6, nothing. Back to you, Member Seliga Punko.
Okay. And the last thing we have is... Number six is informational, just informational purposes, no action required. And then, we have future items. Resolution of Support for Mini-Master Plan for Gearing New Duluth Park near Stowe. And B, Workers' Compensation and Property Liability Insurance Policies and Premium Designation, and that's for the future. So, I move the remainder of the business report, except for the resolution that we approved.
Could I get a second, please?
Second.
Second by Member Westholm. Any discussion? Member Johnston. Or wait... Pardon me. Yes, go ahead.
Items, 1F. I'd like to have a vote on 1G, 1H. Separate vote.
1G?
Correct. And 1H.
Okay. 4B to discuss.
Correct.
All right. 4B, 1?
4B, all.
Okay.
6A.
Is that it?
6F. And 6H.
Is that it? All right. We are back to you. Other board members with items they would like to withhold or discuss. All right. Back to you, Member Johnston. 1F. Let me get you here.
Sure. This is the Wadham Report. Just like to point out a couple of things which are concerning me. Our current enrollment. The first column is 8,618. Last year at this time, actually in October, it was 8,758. That's a decrease of 140. Went back over the last few years. We had a decrease from 2010 to 2011 of 318, which is the steepest decrease we've had. Went down the next year to only 48 decrease the next year. Last... Actually, 48, which was last year. This year, we've had 140 decrease. It appears to be going back up. And when I hear all the discussion we had today about, I think, some of the zero hour discussion and whatnot, about people being concerned about what's happening to our zero hours and particularly our music program, I think that that is coming back to haunt us. And I think we really have to start looking at what's happening to our budget. And of course, for those people that are going to say that, remind everybody that we did pull out $7.6 million last year of our general fund to pay for the red plan debt obligations. This year, it's $6 million. And there's no question, in fact, this is very unique, using Minnesota Statute 46571. We are the only school in the state of Minnesota that has done such massive pullouts from our general fund to fund other things, in this case, the red plan. So, I'd like to bring that up, that I think this is... Unfortunately, this could be a harbinger of where we're going, in particular, when we hear the speakers today.
Superintendent Gronseth.
Thank you, Chair Casper. I think that the fact that we've had a decreasing population certainly has been a part of our conversations in the budget... In the budget conversations over the last several years. Duluth isn't alone in that. It's a... Most districts in the state are experiencing a decrease in population. It's not necessarily because people are leaving Duluth or leaving the Duluth Public Schools. It's because there are less school-age children in Duluth. And so, each year, we have a little... Less students. The demographers that helped us throughout the Long Range Facilities Plan projected this, that there would be a decline, that we would be plateauing. Our decrease in students has begun to slow, and we see it coming up. As an example, our kindergarten... We have many more kindergartners right now than we do 5th graders. So, as these groups continue to come through our schools, we're going to see an increase in the population again. A great example of this is Piedmont Elementary, where currently we have two 5th grade sections and six incoming sections of kindergarten. Certainly, Piedmont has seen more growth than other schools, but this is also true in other schools, where we're seeing kindergarten, 1st, 2nd grade are larger groups than our 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade students. They're still not as large as the senior groups that are going out right now, but we are going to see a leveling off and a slight increase as we go along here.
Thank you. Superintendent, Member Murneke. Hold on a second there, please.
Here we are. I grew up in Duluth, and I've been teaching in this district for a long time, and we did have problems. We had a lot of parents who weren't sure where their children would go to school. And that was a problem many years ago. I don't know what elementary school. I don't know what middle school. The boundaries were changing. I'm an optimist. This isn't against anybody. It's just a different point of view. And I'm an optimist. I agree with the superintendent. I do see a change. I think, maybe not this coming school year coming up, but any year or so, I'm hoping. I'm hoping, not predicting, hoping that we're going to see a change, and I'll be pleased to hit this button and talk about how we've seen an increase in enrollment.
Thank you, Member Murneke. Member Johnston.
Sure, I want to make it real clear that whenever I talk to students and their parents, and I do that quite regularly, I'm concerned when I hear that they may be pulling their kids out of the school. That's a concern, a big concern. But we do have to look at the reality as well. And when you say that, hey, we're the same as everybody else, Duluth, remember, 20 years ago, was about the number three largest school in the state of Minnesota. We're now... I haven't seen it from this year, but we are actually down, I believe, to 20th or less. So, we've had a very significant decrease. When you look at our neighboring schools, they have stayed. They've not had anywhere near the decreases that we've had. And if anybody doesn't believe us, just look up the numbers. Like, I had them last December a year ago, showing all of our neighboring schools that have stayed the same and how we've went down extremely steeply. And so, let's get our facts correct here. We are way down and way more, and you can laugh at it if you want, but we've went from 3rd down to 20th. Populations in the state, we've gone way, way below everybody else, and we have to live up to that fact, and we have to start changing the way we do business. That's not being negative. It's saying we have to keep our kids in our school by being transparent, by giving them a reason to stay in our schools. And that's one thing, not to cut out things like the zero hour, and not to... And to treat our citizens with respect, and our parents with respect. We aren't doing that.
Member Murneke, then Superintendent Gronseth.
Member Johnston, I want you to know again, we disagree that there is a respect here. I mean, but I do have... I have facts, and you have facts. When you say, "Let's get our facts straight," you understand, I'm not saying yours are wrong. I'm saying I also work with facts. Okay? And it's out of respect. I hope you understand that. As an activities director, we had to fill out our MARS reports, and it determined what section your class... Your school would be in. Be in volleyball and soccer, football. And we had to fill out our enrollments. And I... As we would meet in the region, we would talk to neighboring schools, not to name any, and that was always a point of discussion for a long time among the A.D.s. Declining enrollment. It's been happening up here for a long time. There are schools that are going to be closed in the next five years. In fact, we've seen a number of schools up in the county area. When you said 20 years ago, our school size was this large, so is our population. And we are over 105,000. And I remember the line about the last person leaving Duluth turned the lights off. Maybe you guys remember that one. That was a constant. We dropped almost 30,000 people. And a fact is, a lot of the people who left were younger people, were people who had kids. I mean, and again, that hurts the school. We lost a lot of students, and they didn't just go to Proctor, Hermantown, or To Harbors. A lot of people left Duluth and went down to the cities for jobs. So, we did have a precipitous population drop in Duluth, and we've leveled off. But, you know, again, I'm still hopeful that we are going to see, with our new facilities and with a stable school system, we're going to see the students coming back.
Superintendent Gronseth.
Yeah, Member Murneke mentioned part of what I was going to talk about, and that is that the population of the city as a whole is down. But I was going to talk about the market share of the Duluth Public Schools. Currently, we have about 85% of our market share. So, in other words, about 85% of the total students that could attend the Duluth Schools are attending the Duluth Schools. And that's with over 20 different choices available for education in Duluth, including prokial schools, private schools, charter schools, online, the homeschool movement, which is nationwide. All of those together represent about 15% of the market share compared to our 85%. Could we do better? Sure. Have families left during the Long Range Facilities Plan because they weren't happy with the transitions or didn't support the decisions? Yeah, they did. But we're also seeing, as we open these new schools, those families are coming back, and they're starting to rally around our new buildings. And hopefully, we'll be able to connect the community with this new vision and really move forward and do increase that market share, even though it is at 85% already.
Member Johnston.
Just a couple of clarifications. Students throughout Minnesota, overall, there is... It's flat, it's not decreasing overall in Minnesota. Extremely small, maybe 1%. Cities in Minnesota are increasing. Minnesota is an exception. I'm not bragging about that. I'm just saying, if something, if we want to address the issue, we do have to look at the reality of what we have. And certainly, I hope that people come back. But we do have to look at the reality, too. And we aren't doing real well, and we can do better. And that's what I'm asking us to do, to look at that and see if we can do better.
All right. Moving on up, Member Westholm. Welcome.
Hi. Yeah, my job, when I was still employed downtown here, one of them, the last couple of years, was to keep track of enrollment stuff. And I spent, I don't know how many hours, at the beginning of the school year and then at semester time, contacting every school and tracking on a daily basis what enrollment was doing. And one of the things that was very clear is, we knew that our enrollment was going to decline. And I also... We also knew that it was going to level out and then maybe start to kick up a little bit with the third generation of... It wasn't a mini baby boom, but, you know, we knew it was going to flatten out. So, I don't think... These numbers don't surprise me at all. I think they're very close to what we all knew was coming many, many years ago. So, I guess that's all I'll say about that.
Thank you, Member Westholm. Back to Member Johnston.
Just a real quick thing. Our enrollments are not up. We've went 140 decrease since October. Look at the numbers. Go back and look at our October Waddams, and look at this one. It's 140 down. No 5th grade is not up. We're down 40 from 4 to 12, 4 to 6. So, no, enrollment is not up, and we are way below the lowest projection of the demographers on the red plan. We are below that number.
All right. Member Johnston, you want a separate vote on the fundraisers?
Is that an action item?
That isn't... Either... Neither of those are actual action items. So, we don't have the separate opportunity to vote on those. Is there something you would like to say regarding those?
Okay. So, what are we voting on, then, as this committee, then?
The entire report.
Right. And I'll be voting against that, yet I want to vote for the fundraisers and investment in school children.
Duly noted. Moving on to...
I want to vote.
It's not an action item.
I've always voted on this before. It's no use saying I can't vote affirmative on this.
I'm just saying it's not an action item. You can certainly vote for it, but... Mr. Hanson, you would like to weigh in on that?
Chair Casper, members of the board, we have talked the last couple of months about the informational items in Section 6 not being items that you vote on, but Section 1, the financial report, is items... Are... Do contain items that the board votes on. And so, if you choose to, as a board, you can break those items out separately and take a vote on those.
Okay. I received bad counsel regarding that. All right. We will vote separately. Thank you for that correction, Mr. Hanson. Voting separately on 1G. All those in favor?
Hold it. I'm not even ready. What... Where are we voting on?
We are voting separately on Item 1G fundraisers and the support of those.
Do we have a motion? Motion to vote on this? Did you make a motion?
I already did.
Member Seliga Punko made a motion.
No, she wants to pull it out separate. Is that right, Mr. Johnston? You want to pull this one out separate?
Just vote it separate.
But we need... You need a motion or not?
No, we don't. All right. Moving to vote separately on 1G. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to vote separately on Item 1H, Investment in School Children. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Member Johnston, back to the items you've pulled out for discussion. Item 4B, Congdon Park Elementary.
Right. I have 4B. I'll put it to speed things up. I'll talk about all of them, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Again, looking at change orders. Again, some of these are just plain silly. $150 change order, $224 change order. I mean, the bookkeeping costs more than that. That is absurd. Luckily, we're down from 270,000 from last month to only 6,000, so I certainly commend the administration on that. But again, even the ones we've got are pretty ridiculous. Modifying Science Room Roughens, that's part of the original plans. Double poll... Uh, modifying science room rough-ins, that's part of the original plans, double pole, double throws, switches, um, it's all silly. So I'll make a motion that we do not approve these change orders.
Uh, do I have a second for that motion? That motion fails. Uh, to six A, Member Johnston?
Yeah, again, this one is informational, and just want to make it clear, I do support these, even though I will be voting against, uh, the rest of this, uh, report. Uh-
So you would like-
No, I don't want to vote, I think we decided last time we didn't need it, but I want to make clear for the record that I do support these items, even though I will be voting against the-
On six A?
Six A, I will be supporting that, even though we're not voting on it.
Okay, item six F, please?
Sure. Six F, again, this is more change orders, this is eleven thousand this time. And here I'm gonna read another one here, another absurd change order, a totally irresponsible change order. I'll read the first one. Change order increased to make an adjustment to a prior change order, uh, credit. That was not accepted. Here's another one, to frame rock and insulate the east wall. I mean, we didn't have insulation in the east wall. Uh, here's another one, paint the baseboard and match it, assisting refinish baseboards throughout the room. Never seen a building ever built that didn't have painted baseboards and matched it, another thousand dollars. Again, I'm asking the administration to start paying attention and to say no to Johnson Controls and these absurd, irresponsible change orders.
Okay, uh, Member Johnston, six H.
We had a good presentation from Accuterial. Say that wrong?
Actuarial.
Actuarial, excuse me, thank you. Evaluation of other post-employment benefits. Still question, how much did we pay for that?
I'll have to get it to you. It's less than ten thousand. I believe it's under nine.
Okay. For the report to be put together.
For the whole actuarial report and the, and, yes.
Okay, thank you, Jonah.
One thing I would like to say, I thought it was a good report, there's a lot of information I didn't know, so, uh, thank you on that. One of the things, though, that I do have to say, there's been a lot of talk, it seems like, in the Duluth media as well as certainly nationwide media about solvency, uh, benefits. These are post, uh, employment benefits, mainly health insurance, but they're, we had the discussion, just bring up the discussion we had on retirement as well, so I'm gonna kind of throw that, uh, discussion in here. The concern that I had, and, uh, I know this is a tough issue, that we're not gonna resolve this anytime, I didn't expect this lady to resolve it, but, you know, we asked the question of, are we gonna be, uh, are we going to be solvent or not? And the answer, that we didn't get that answer. And as a board member here, and we're looking at this, these are concerns that's impacting a lot of governments, not just us, of course, it's pretty much all governments across the board, state, school, uh, municipalities. And I don't know how to get that answer, but I certainly would like to have one of these, our accountants and CPAs and all them to try to give us an answer. Are we gonna be solvent or not? And the other, and say that we know we can't necessarily do a lot about that, we had that discussion. A lot of these rates are set by the state legislature, so it's, excuse me, it's not something we can negotiate ourselves. Uh, but that doesn't, doesn't, doesn't necessarily, uh, doesn't help us out, you know, if we, are we gonna be solvent or not, and somehow just like to put forth the suggestion here that we somehow have to get an answer to that. And, um, and so I just want to express that. And so I appreciate the, the discussion we had, and if we can somehow go next time to try to get that answer. Are we gonna be solvent in both our retirement, too, we're gonna throw in retirement here, as well as some of these, uh, health insurance.
Superintendent G.
I, I just wanted to confirm that, yes, all those, all those rates are set by the legislature and the, the benefit rates as well. And that's something that is being discussed in the legislature right now, and so I, I urge people to, uh, be paying attention to that discussion. Uh, it's important to our future.
Thank you. Um, that concludes any, uh, items for discussion on the, uh, Business Committee Report. We have a motion and a second. Uh, there is no further discussion. All those in favor of the Business Committee Report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That carries five to one. Um, moving on on the agenda, we have no, we have a couple of future things to consider, but we have no, uh, further-
Special resolution.
Items, where's our special resolution?
Well, back to your-
I'm sorry.
Back to your agenda.
Okay, we have a special resolution before us. Uh, Member Murneke, could you please read that for us? Hold on a second, please, uh, there you go.
Resolve that independent school district seven oh nine, St. Louis County, Minnesota, pay cost incurred as per district policy for board, school board members to attend the Minnesota School Boards Association two thousand and thirteen joint legislative conference at St. Paul, Minnesota, on March twentieth, twenty-first, two thousand and thirteen. I move resolution three thirteen thirty seventy-eight.
Um, could I get a second? Second by Member Westholm. Any discussion regarding the resolution? Seeing none, let's move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries six, nothing. Board members, we are adjourned. And Eric, thank you for being here. I'm sorry, Eric, you, uh-
It says here on the agenda that- Um, there's time for, uh, questions or other?
Yes.
I have a, one or two quick questions before we conclude here. Um, Superintendent, you said earlier in your report that, um, zero hour was available for, uh, incoming sophomores? All right, I have heard, um, consensus among, uh, freshmen now and even some staff that that wasn't the case, so thank you for the clarification. And then, correct me if this isn't the time to address this, but, um-